Okay, council is seven o'clock on December the fourth, twenty twenty four. I call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Um, roll call.
And Mayor, we do have um councillor Dominguez is excused. Um, and we're not sure council can make the determination on if for councillor V Hill if it's excused. I guess there was work on the gym and their practice got moved late, so he's got the basketball practice tonight.
Yes, yes, and I I think that's what he text me, uh Ms Sanchez as well. And we do have councillor Jackie V Hill on Zoom, right? And we're right, okay. So council, um councillor Jan V Hill. Um, he did text and mentioned that uh due to them doing some type of work on the gym, it was pushed back and he would hope that we would consider excuse. So I'm gonna see if what what you all would say.
I would move that he's excused since it's work related.
Okay, alrighty. Okay. Everybody here. Good deal. Second. Alright, okay. That brings us to the next item on on the agenda, agenda approval. Councillor Carson?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Grab a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, none. If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms Suzanne. And Ms Jackie?
Yes.
Okay. Think we have some technical difficulties?
I'm not showing who's voting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the uh next item on the agenda, citizen comments. This is the segment on the agenda where if anyone in the audience or on Zoom would like to make any comments, uh you can come to the podium if you're here in the audience. And uh we do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. We do have a timer. Uh if you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. Do we have anyone in the audience? Um, I don't have any comment cards. So I don't have any comment cards. So what I'm going to do now is go to Zoom and open it up for anyone on Zoom who would like to make any comments. If you're on Zoom, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand and we will recognize you and uh give you an opportunity to speak. Okay, I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and move on down to the next item, which is consent, calendar A. Councillor uh Carson?
I move we approve consent, calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms Suzanne?
Ms councillor Jackie V Hill?
I agree.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. The homeless coalition update.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Donna Wehe and I am the chair for the City of Alamosa Homeless Coalition. And I'm just here to give an annual update. Um, and also, one of the uh members of the coalition is Judy McNeil Smith and she's also in the audience here tonight too. So just some talking points and updates and happy to take questions. Um, the council, the coalition is really excited to see Horizon Heights up and running. Um, the difference in the housing that this is making in the lives of tenants, the group feels pride for identifying that type of housing need for the community and helping get the ball rolling and appreciate everything that you guys do as a city to support that. Spent a lot of time working on categories for the public education outreach. It resulted in a video covering the general services that the city provides. And we'll try to do some more videos in twenty twenty fives that focus on housing and homelessness. And just some background on that is that the video wanted to showcase all the good things the city does so that it could kinda quash some of the rumors that all we do is spend the money on the homeless, so. We spent a lot of time working on the new rules. We brainstormed on what to track in order to report back to the city council and how things are going at Saint Benedict's. We spent some time discussing items that were also coming before the council, including panhandling, um the sit lie, no camping in tents, and the change from cold weather to year round for the low barrier shelter. Um, November was homeless youth awareness month. Um, we're working with the library for day of service. The group stays up to date on the multiple housing projects. A very key member of our coalition is Dawn um Melgaris from the Housing Coalition. And the group meets every other month now, that's a change. We were meeting monthly. And there's a lot of vacancies on our Coalition Advisory Council. So we would like this to be a focus um for all of you to be aware and then also for all of us to be working on in the year going forward that we have a lot of positions that are open. That is the end of my talking points. Do you have any questions or comments?
Sure, let me open it up um to council for any comments or question. Councillor Krebs?
No questions, just a a huge thank you for all the work that everyone has done in in the last year. It's it's been amazing and you you don't see it, you take a big step back and look at the huge picture, but i- it's made a difference. So thank you for everything.
Thanks, Dawn.
I too want to thank you for all the work that you all do and and actually uh helping come up with some of the rules that are recently been uh implemented. Really appreciate that. And uh to your other point, um we just met with a person who's uh interviewing to be one of the Coalition Board members as well, so that is uh on on in the forefront of what we're thinking about as well. Okay, oh councillor um Jackie V Hill has her hand raised.
Hi Jackie.
Hi, um I just wanted to say that I've really enjoyed being a part of the homeless coalition. And yes, I agree, you guys have done a lot of work this year. And um I applaud all your efforts.
Well, we appreciate the presence of council, presence of law enforcement, the leadership from Heather, the support of the city, cause this group um really tries to bring a lot of different perspectives around the table and be really thoughtful about some of the decisions. So thank you Jackie and appreciate your presence there too. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
And Mayor, as part of the homeless coalition update, um Sergeant Squires has replaced Captain Mestus on there. Um, and we also felt this would be a good time to provide um some very specific updates from the work that they've been doing.
Yeah, thanks Heather, council. Good evening. Um, I'm gonna give you a pretty broad update and a very detailed update of what we've got going on at Saint Benedict's and with our homeless population and all the work that we've done since about mid to late September since I moved into that office and and taking care of those responsibilities. So that happened mid to late September, I took over lead um co responders and temporarily um code enforcement as well, so all of our CSO officers. Um, there, when I moved into that office, I realized some of the enforcement on the old rules wasn't taking place and we moved into starting enforcing the old rules while they were still into effect. And like I said, that was probably the beginning of October when we really started enforcing those old rules. Um, we did have a mishap with an overdose in in, it was the week of October thirteenth. Um, we happened to have thirteen overdoses in that week at Saint Benedict's. Um, we did have one mishap with the trespass during that time where uh a party had overdose and he was trespassed immediately. Um, and that was a misdirection for our officers and for me as well. Um, that was completely changed. And I want that known going forward that if if there is an overdose out there, it's not gonna result in an immediate trespass. Um, I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. Um but since my time over there, it it increased to to five people being trespassed. We we got rid of the the bully, as everybody called him in in our public meetings as the bully. Um, we got rid of the one person that we identified as distributing drugs out there. Um, that person is no longer resident. And then we got rid of somebody that was just disposing of their needles on our roadway and through the bushes and stuff like that. That person is also gone. And then a couple others have come up for various other rule violations, assaults and and other criminal activity that have been trespassed as well. Um, since taking over that office, um a a big thing to note is we have purchased thirty-five bus tickets. Now, that that might not seem like a large number, but that is double the number that we have purchased through twenty twenty-four up till the time I moved into that office. So we have really increased the purchasing of bus tickets and that's referrals from patrol, code enforcement. Um, really a lot from street outreach in La Puente, but we're we're purchasing bus tickets at a pretty fast rate. So now that we've got our new rules into effect, we, those went into effect December second after homeless coalition meeting and that's the date we decided. We had given them five, all the residents out there, about five weeks to let them know that the new rules were coming. And those were signs posted out at Saint Benedict's notifying that there was going to be a meeting every Monday within that five weeks to discuss the new rules, give them the option to sign up and just explain in detail what the new rules were gonna have. So they could decide if they wanted to stay or leave Saint Benedict's. Um, now that the new rules have gone to effect, we went camp to camp, making sure people wanted to stay. If they wanted to stay, they had to sign the new rules and the new contract. That was done, um and during that time, there's found to be twenty-two occupied spaces out there. And that's as of yesterday. So there's twenty-two occupied camps. Twenty-nine individuals have signed the rules and three of those are being visitors. So twenty-nine total have signed the rules. Three of those are visitor status, so they might not live there, but even if if our officers come into contact with somebody that's just visiting, we have them sign the rules, cause if you're out there, you have to abide by our rules. So we have them sign if if we make contact with them. Um, during the time when we're enforcing these new rules, we had my co responders or code enforcement officers went around and were making sure everybody was in compliance with the new rules as of December second. If we found a campsite that wasn't in compliance with the new rules, there was a posted sign placed in front of that campsite telling them they're out of compliance and they needed to do this to get into compliance. Um, and it was a cleanliness. So ten out of the twenty-two got those get into compliance signs, that they have forty-eight hours to get into compliance with our new rules. Now, I, we give them the forty-eight hours, but it's not like an immediate trespass after forty-eight hours if they're not into compliance. Our co responders are out there daily helping them move their belongings, move the trash, move everything we have to move to get them into compliance. Cause if they're willing to sign the rules, we want them. So we we wanna help them get into compliance. Out of the twenty-two, four were posted with do not enter because they are abandoned or they are unwilling to follow the rules and they left. So out of the twenty-two, there's only four that were deemed abandoned. And those are all going to be cleaned up on our large item cleanup, which is scheduled for December twelfth. We're gonna go out there and we're we're really gonna clean it. Um, I'm with skidsters and stuff like that and and make it nice. Um, out of the twenty-two, eight campsites are already in compliance, um as of the time they sign the rules. And the six-month timeframe that is on the rules will start on that December second day. Um, and that's all stuff that we are tracking, our code enforcement is tracking. Um, and we did build a spreadsheet to track all this stuff, right? So we're we're tracking who's there, the time they sign the rules, the date, when their six months expires. If they're involved in any services, we're tracking. If they're willing to give us that information, we're tracking that as well. Um, and we're tracking if they have visitors, have pets, what their campsite looks like and what work needs to be done. So we can all see that, my whole team can see that. And if we could identify what needs to be done, we'll go out there and help them get that done so they could fall back into compliance. Um, we did have a a separate update is I did send a CSO officer to uh an unsheltered encampment site training, specifically identifying what we're doing, is it working, is it up to par? And that was a statewide training and uh Alamosa, his return back to me was Alamosa is up to date with best practices. And we are really on the lenient side of enforcement when it comes to these topics. That was the biggest thing that he brought back um from that training. So things are looking good and and they're definitely on the up out there, so. That's all I got as as far as an update. Um, I know the the new sign has been we're we're working on the sign, it's it's not quite done yet to get put out there as well.
Okay, I believe we're gonna have some questions for you, councillor Carson and then councillor Hensley. And then councillor Krebs?
Awesome.
Thank you.
That's like uh that's the first, like the first real uh and I'm not knocking anything in the past at all, I'm just saying that's of the first real thorough update we get and and I think just the fact that you guys are doing that now changes the whole game. Like it really does. It it actually, we're creating something that we're creating what we wanted to do in the first place, I think, with that. And and that's what I really just, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I can say. You guys are doing great work, kicking butt and that it's just, that's awesome, cause that that's what it was meant to be and the way that you guys are tracking it is making it a service that we can use, not not a a bastion of negativity, you know what I mean? So thank you guys, very good work, very good work.
Thank you councillor Carson. Okay councillor uh Hensley and then councillor Krebs?
So I concur. Um, I think this is great. What I really appreciate is obviously the data. I also really um I'm glad we're putting these rules in and having some structure and building a culture there, but I really appreciate the fact that what you're, what the message you're sending is that people all, you are also working with them with empathy and that obviously trying, if they're putting the effort in trying to help them to also be part of that culture, so it's more of a team effort. And that idea, if they're gonna be part of the team, that you're also, your team is also there to help. And so I really appreciate that. At the same time, if you're not gonna play by the rules, then obviously it's not the place for them. And Dawn, in a way also to say, okay, this isn't isn't what's meant for you, but building then um sort of that strong support unit right there. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Hensley, councillor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
That was a lot of work. Wow. Thank you for that, because I think that's in in my brain personally, that's where I wanted to see it. I wanted to see it as a stepping stone to a solution for people in homelessness. And the first thing to do is to give our staff the teeth to be able to to make decisions and enforce it and not just throw your hands up. Having said that, how how does your staff, I mean, has has is there a shift in the mood around it? Because I know before it was what can we do, you know, it it has to be here, oh well. But now that things are starting to progress and you've laid found foundation that was not there and you're starting to build up from that, do you see maybe a shift in your personnel of of getting more behind it?
Yes, ma'am. I I think uh speaking from a personal note, it all comes from uh motivation, right? Wh- what are we trying to accomplish out there? And I think I I'm not, I don't wanna put it on me, but I I we've we've put the message, me and the chief have put the message to our team. This is what we want it to look like and this is how it should be ran. And laid out the steps for them. I I'm not gonna ask them to do something that we're not willing to do. Um, we are out there posting signs, me and the chief are out there with them, like we are all involved in it. I think when they see leadership out there helping them actually accomplish the goal, it motivates them. And I think, you know, the whole team, even patrol is is excited because it's it's looking different already. And I'm really excited to see what it looks like in another month, because you know, we we have a lot of good things coming. So I think it's just motivating them because they can see the changes that are already occurring, so.
And Sergeant Squires, i- if you said this, I apologize, but I believe maybe one of the bullets was also the the big drop in call for services that we've seen. Where where patrol was getting calls daily out there. And then since the enforcement of the rules and and that, that it's dropped significantly, is that correct?
Right, I actually um have the numbers. I I guess I just skipped over that bulletin, but since mid-October, since that week of all the the overdoses, we've only had six calls for service. And and that's in a, you know, a month and a half to six-week timeframe, like that is a huge win. Um, and I think a lot of that, like I mentioned in a community partners meeting yesterday, a lot of that has to do with my team. It's not me, it's it's those guys that are out there doing um walkthroughs, security checks. I think there was thirty-eight security checks done in that timeframe. So they're out there multiple times a day, cause they're they're not working that much. So they're they're out there multiple times a day doing security checks, doing walkthroughs. I think that's where we have to give the credit of that too. Plus the enforcement of the old rules um really decrease the call volume as well.
That's that's awesome to hear. And I, and you mentioned working together as a team and motivating your team. That December twelfth cleanup, um are we welcome to come out and help?
Absolutely, I it's I mean
That's when we, it's a, we're contracting that out. Oh, are you? They may not want, if they're doing their own equipment and stuff, they may not want a lot of extra people milling around. Am I?
I mean, yeah, our, my team is gonna be out there, um not more of cleaning up, but just helping them keep it organized. I mean
Got you.
You're more than welcome to come. I don't know how much cleanup you'd actually be involved in, because like Heather said, it's it's a contract with with heavy equipment and stuff, so.
No worries. Oh, you're like, you're gonna be like
We are contracting out with a company to come in and get it cleaned up.
Awesome. Okay. And and you know what? If the people that are living out there are making the effort, then this shows that we are too. So, thank you for that.
Of course.
And to add a little bit of detail, I I the the tipping point was when we did do the trespass on some of these individuals, there was just so much left behind that we weren't gonna dig ourselves out from a volunteer cleanup day perspective. And so that's when uh Squires recommended we just bite the bullet and do one big cleanup. We'll still do regular volunteer cleanups, but the the big campsites that were left behind and then picked through and and all of that kinda stuff, we just needed to bring something in big time.
Okay, um Jackie V Hill, uh councillor, did you? I don't know if I saw your hand up or saw something else orange on the screen.
No, I didn't raise my hand, but I just wanna say that I'm very happy that the residents there were willing to they're starting to abide by them and also, you know, the the empathy that um you, um Sergeant Squires and your team has shown to these people. Um, I think it's all in an effort to work together to get this to a place where it should be a human, a humanized place for these people to live.
Thank you, uh councillor Jackie V Hill. Uh Sergeant Squires, I'll wrap things up. Um, wanna thank you for the work that you and your team are doing, really appreciate it. Uh, as council, we we often hear from the community about making sure whenever we bring about changes um in anything that we're doing, that we educate and inform um people in the community. It sounds like from the notes that I took here from you, uh you all did a great job of educating those who uh are residing there in the camp. And you had five weeks of of, I believe, um meetings
Yes, sir.
Each week. I'm just curious about how many uh people showed up to those meetings during those five weeks.
Well, well, not a lot, Mayor, to be to be honest with you. We we had a hard time getting them to sign the rules before the day came. Um, before December second, we only had three individuals that had signed the rules. So we had a hard time finding them. Um, but we, that's why on the tw- on the second, I made sure we went camp to camp to camp. We couldn't really enforce them to come to those meetings, but I knew on December second, I could go camp to camp and say, here's the rules, this is what we've gotta do from here on.
That's good. Well, it's good that you established that opportunity for them to come to the meeting. And once again, uh all we can do is give people opportunities and it's up to them to make that choice if they wanna follow rules, go by the guidelines and take advantage of the opportunities. Really impressed with, and correct me if I'm wrong with some of my data numbers that I took down from you, but I'm so impressed with these numbers. I wanna make sure when people are calling and asking questions about Saint Benedict's, because we do have quite a few people who are not really informed about all the things that we're doing. But from when your team took over, I believe we've had probably uh five trespasses. We got rid of the bully, we got rid of the drug dealer, we got rid of the other people who are committing uh violations and not following in in the ga- any of the guidelines. Uh, you purchased about thirty-five bus tickets saying so, okay. And then um also the twenty-two spaces, uh you have a total of twenty-nine signed uh documents. Does that mean when you have twenty-two spaces and three of visitors, does that mean you may have a couple of people staying together?
Yes, ma'am. There's a a couple of couples, uh a couple of married parties out there that that stay together and live in the same tent.
Okay, good.
But they all signed the rules, every individual out there.
That is awesome. And then um when when you all um I guess you were checking the 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 units out there, ten of the twenty uh two were out of compliance and then four of them are abandoned.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Good. And eight camp sites are in compliance.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, that is really good. And then the most important thing is that you you sent one of the team members to get training and the team member came back saying that the city uh and the team are in compliance and up to speed with what's going on in this um type of situation.
Yes, sir.
Alright, that that is amazing. And then the last important thing, only six calls for service?
Yes, ma'am.
Since mid-October?
Yes, sir.
What was the call volume like before? And the reason I I wanna, I'm asking you that question because I don't think people understand how huge of an impact this is.
I I don't have those those numbers for you, Mayor. I I can tell you that it was drastically higher than that. And that had been probably for the last four years, drastically higher.
Right. Well, thank you so very much. Appreciate all you all are doing and just be safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it, council.
Okay. Council, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-four, resolution establishing a fee for the vacant building uh registration requirement in the Central Business District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So I'm here as a follow-up to ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four that we adopted on October second. So fees are adopted by resolution. Um, this is the fee that was enumerated in that ordinance. And tonight, we're requesting that council consider the fee for the annual registration of vacant buildings in our Central Business District to be five hundred dollars. So again, this is an annual fee. It is supposed to be a little bit of an inconvenience. That's the the spirit of that ordinance is that we're trying to encourage some of our vacant property owners downtown to be a little bit more proactive about trying to find a renter or trying to do something with their properties. Um, we don't feel that five hundred dollars is unreasonable, but we do feel that it's inconvenient. Um, and beyond that, I will just remind council that our Economic Development Director pretty regularly at our Economic Development meetings talks about how she is always trying to find spaces downtown. That she's finally at a position where when she started, she had um too many buildings and not enough businesses. And now she's at a place where she has too many businesses and not enough buildings. So we do have a handful of kind of prime real estate downtown and we're just doing everything we can to try to motivate those owners to um be better members of the community. So I'm here for questions.
Okay, thank you councillor Carson.
Do I have any questions?
Okay. Councillor Krebs, any question?
I have, I have a couple. Um where would this money raised go to?
The general fund.
Okay. Um, and how long would the building need to be vacant before a fee was imposed? If if someone, if if um someone was renting from me and they left that building and it took, you know, and it's been empty for a month, would I get a fee or would it be like a six-month or a three-month?
So I I do believe there's a definition in the ordinance itself, and I believe it's six months, but I wouldn't I wouldn't quote.
I think the city attorney is trying to look that up very quickly. But that would be in the def- that would be in the ordinance you already approved.
Correct.
Okay.
There's a chance we didn't define it. It might be something we discussed. And if so, that's a
Says per year at the end of this ordinance, so.
I think Commissioner Krebs is asking how long something needs to be vacant. Um, again, if it's not defined in the ordinance, I I do believe as a matter of practice, we would wait with, work with business owners as long as it's practical. I mean, most of the business, the buildings that are vacant downtown have been vacant for years. So I don't think any business that's, you know, closed for a matter of six months is probably even gonna trigger this. It'd probably be closer to a year unless it's something we've specifically put in the ordinance.
I don't think this is gonna get answered quickly, so we can either move on to other agenda items um, or if we wanna move on to other questions.
Um, just another question, and and that was just more of a point of clarity, um, for business owners out there. And, um, will it, when this takes effect with the fee and all, does it take effect with businesses already in the Central Business District or is it from this point moving forward?
It, because it's an annual fee, it'll be, it'll begin in twenty-twenty-five for ones that are currently vacant. So it's not, it's one of those rare times where, unlike most land use regulations that everyone's grandfathered in, because they're perpetually vacant, it'll apply to those businesses as well.
Thank you.
And I I genuinely do not think there is a time limit, I don't think there's something, that's something we defined. And I'll defer to the city attorney about whether or not that's something we should bring in ordinance amendment before Council for.
Yeah, Councilor Carson.
I definitely think we should have some sort of a time limit. Uh, I do remember the discussion that we had being, uh, within reasonable, a reasonable effort being made to to rent the building. I do remember talking about that, but I don't recall that we did set a time limit. I would feel comfortable making a motion, uh, to the effect, I don't know if it's, I think it's possible to change the motion stating that as long as reasonable being, effort is being made, you know, with some sort of six-month threshold. But I don't know if you wanna retable it and then rewrite the 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 ordinance.
Hang on, I finally found a version of it. Vacant means a building or structure that is not legally occupied for a total of thirty consecutive days or more in any period of three hundred sixty-four days, so you defined it in the ordinance.
I was wrong on both counts.
And and Mayor, I'm I'm comfortable making a motion on the five hundred. It does seem like a short period of time, but in the long run, these buildings do sit for a very long time. And I I am confident in the city staff that if they contact the owner and the owner's making every effort to fill that building, I'm sure some grace period will be added in. So I'm comfortable making a motion for the five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councilor Jackie V Hills?
Councilor Jackie V Hill? You muted? Oh, you saying yes? Thank you, you were frozen, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, all right? That brings us to the next item and the police. Uh, on the agenda, public hearing and second reading for ordinance number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County Sheriff's Office for co-responder support for jail operations.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, this is the second reading for, we talked about it last time, to allow our coresponders up to sixteen hours a month to provide services to the, uh, Alamos County Jail and for the jail staff and in return, they'll, um, compensate the city a thousand dollars a month.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, uh, for ordinance number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-four, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County Sheriff's Office for co-responder support for jail operations. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments, uh, during this public hearing, please feel free to do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium, so now I will open up the public hearing for the Zoom participants. If you're on Zoom, uh, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and, uh, we will recognize you to allow you to make comments, uh, during this public hearing. So if anyone's on Zoom would like to make any comments at this time, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, so I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to Council uh, for for any follow-up or motions. Councilor Carson?
Uh, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance, uh, thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councilor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Suzanne, okay? That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under City Clerk, Municipal Court. First reading, ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four, and ordinance amending section five through five dash twenty-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to provide for referral of campaign finance complaints to the Secretary of State when the City Clerk's office has a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, the legislature enacted legislation that amended the Colorado Fair Campaign, uh, Practices Act to provide for localities that have their own Fair Campaign Practices Act, such as we do, to refer campaign violations to the Secretary of State for resolution when the clerk, who would otherwise address those, has a conflict of interest. And that could arise, for instance, where one of you seated council members has committed a or has been alleged to have committed a Campaign Finance Act violation. She reports directly to you, um, and her staff through her, so that would provide kind of a conflict of interest for her for dealing with that. And this enables her to, she she will make a first determination whether a complaint that gets filed actually, she thinks states a plausible violation. And if it does, she can now refer it to the Secretary of State to handle it rather than her office, which is conflicted. But we have to have a provision in our ordinances authorizing that, so that's what this does.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Councilor Carson?
Uh, I move that we approve ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four and set it on first reading, on first reading and set for public hearing on Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven P M or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councilor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, Council, you're doing a great job, we're getting close to the end of this agenda here, uh, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports, no committee reports? All right, that brings us to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, um, as Harry makes his way up, I'll just do the reminder that this Friday, we do have the celebration of lights. I know Andy's team, um, probably with other staff members too, have really brainstormed to make it creative and a great community event. I think it, the festivity starts here at five-thirty with the actual lights being turned on at six P M. And we may even be highlighting our K-nines, so, um, looking forward to Friday night. And with that, I'll turn it over to Harry.
Good evening, Council, uh, just kinda wanna inform Council of the area that we're having some problems with the sewer line again. Um, if you'll remember back in twenty-twenty-one, right there from Central Mobile Home Park where we had that sewer line collapsing and we had to go and make that emergency repair. In the red, that was the section that was that was failing and we completed, uh, in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, that winter. Um, the yellow and blue are the areas that we've worked on over the last few years, um, as we've had the funds to continue with that line replacement. Um, we had to focus one year on when we were losing that sanitary line in Main Street. So the funding went to lining, uh, the sewer line through Main Street and any of the crossings. Twenty-twenty-four, we were gonna go basically from that canal crossing north to the recycling yard, finish that section. But unfortunately, we we, uh, we didn't get it done. Um, we refocused some of that money to other areas that were in need, that needed line and a higher priority. Last week, we identified an area that was collapsing right there on the north side of the road. Um, we're gonna go in and do a spot fix, uh, this coming Monday, kind of repair that. And, uh, we think it'll probably get us through winter, but we went ahead and ordered the pipe to continue that line extension if needed. A little bit of that's dependent on the lead time of the pipe, well, you know, as far as availability, it's about nine hundred feet. And, uh, of course, the weather, you know, if we get another storm and it freezes, we won't be able to get in there. We think we'll still make it to springtime without having to open it, open up the road. But that blue section right now is, uh, half of it's unpaid as we're, we did a lot of that this last, like, kind of late in the fall. And so what I'd like to do is repair the rest of that north of the blue line and fix it all in the spring. So that's the intent, but next week, we'll start, um, up there where the collapsed line is. And then, if weather permitting, we'll continue replacing that line to the south, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, um, Councilor Carson has a question for you.
So, um, this may be a dumb question, your map is kind of self-explanatory, but is that the primary or is that the only, um, sewer line coming out of the trailer park?
That actually comes, it joins, uh, a main line that feeds all of State Avenue. That red line is really the main line, it, if if you were to go south of it, the line goes south, the sewer line goes south of the park. And then it follows the eastern boundary of the Mobile Home Park and picks up the Mobile Home Park and then goes east in the red. So it's one of our main sewer lines for the whole south end, but it kind of ties this, uh, Century Mobile Home Park and anything south of that together.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for that update, appreciate it.
And that's the end of staff updates.
Oh, okay, good. That brings us down to, um, Council comments. Councilor Carson?
Uh, I just wanna tell everyone to have, uh, or hope everyone had a happy, um, happy holiday and, uh, have a good rest of the month, looking forward to December and all the days off, so. Enjoying, good work, staff and good work, Chief and the team over there. I'm sure the residents on Seventeenth or Twentieth are happy too, they've probably seen a a drop in, um, activity for sure. I'll, uh, I'll touch base to you after I talk to a couple of them, but thank you, guys, appreciate it greatly.
Hey, anybody else before we wrap it up? Okay, thank you, uh, staff, um, thank you so very much. We're all looking forward to, uh, this, um, weekend, uh, with the first Friday and the lights. Um, so looking forward to seeing everybody, hopefully you could bring your families out and sip on some hot chocolate and eat some cookies. So this meeting is adjourned.